All right, welcome to this meeting of the Monterey City Council. Um, we'll call the meeting to order and begin with roll call.
Councilmember Barber, present, councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
And Mayor Williamson is not with us today.
All right, so um. Let's see, due to the emergency circumstances, remote participation request. Um, I just have a few questions to ask councilmember Garcia, who is has requested to attend the meeting remotely. Um, first of all, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Uh, do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
What is a brief explanation of your need to promote participate remotely under the emergency circumstances clause? There is no need to disclose medical information or disability status.
Yeah, I had to travel due to illness and consequence consequently passing of a relative.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
And is anyone aged eighteen or over with you in the room? If yes, please disclose your relationship.
No.
Okay, um. So public, is there any public comment on this request? None in the chamber, any online?
No hands raised, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, with that, I would look for a motion to approve councilmember Garcia's request. Okay, all right.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. And then um. Can we do that by by consent, unanimous consent, or do we need roll call?
So all votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting will be taken by roll call. And um, the member participating remotely shall participate through audio and visual technology.
Okay, go ahead then with the roll call.
Um, councilmember Garcia, oh, um, you may wish to recuse, I'm just, I'm sorry for calling on you first.
Yes, I I recuse, or I abstain.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Okay, and so city manager, did you say you would like us to move towards the public? Hearing first and then deal with consent later?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so um, at this time, we will open a public hearing. Um, to consider the planning commission's decision on twenty one oh one North Fremont Street Hotel. Um, and I'll turn it over to staff for presentation at this time.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, I um. Would like to introduce the topic slightly differently, uh, that that might uh lead us to the. Uh, recommendation by city staff, five seventy Manras. Uh, it's not the topic in front of us, but five seventy Manras is a city property that. Uh, the city discussed in uh, two thousand three, two thousand five, two thousand six, it was uh occupied. Uh, by a Safeway grocery store in downtown Monterey, and it was a property that uh was always. Available there for residents to come and buy grocery shopping because the parking lot was always empty. And there was a reason why the parking lot was was a lot of times empty because. Uh, the store was dilapidated, it was uh not working well, and it was frankly stated stuck. Uh, in a time period that was not appealing to customers anymore. And when we saw the uh sales tax data for the stores. At that time, for that safer store at that time, uh, it was reflective of that. Uh, Safeway was operating this since nineteen fifty one, and uh they didn't hear the signs that the city was sending out. And in two thousand six. Uh, Trader Joe's was uh opening there, and Trader Joe's uh immediately. Led to another problem, the parking lot is not sufficient because it's always full, and you heard complaints about that. So this is um the introduction to this item in front of you with respect. To twenty one oh one North Fremont Street, because frankly, what what I took away from that and what I transferred to that is. Investments into uh commercial entities are necessary. Uh, they replaced uh an dilapidated um asset with a new attractive asset in the same zoned area. Uh, with the same purpose, uh, and immediately, uh, the city. Of Monterey, the taxpayers of Monterey received more revenues that makes a lot of our services more affordable for us. So uh, what is in front of you is twenty one oh one North Fremont. There are three terms that I want to introduce to you that are not part of Levi's presentation. Uh, he kind of. Uh, will use them though. The first one is V A F, uh, vehicle, uh, I'm sorry, visitor accommodation facility zoning. And that was created by by the residents per charter amendment in nineteen eighty nine. And visitor accommodation facilities, they basically wrote into the city charter. Where sixty eight sixty eight hotels in the city of Monterey can be located. That's the only space we will have, nothing else can be created anywhere else. That's, but what you need to understand is V A F zoning, and it's basically uh fulfilling the vision of the community from nineteen eighty nine. To ensure that we have the upper hand of the hotels and regulate where they can be. Uh, the next word that is important is the general plan. The general plan is is a is a guiding document created by the residents of the city of Monterey and the city council. Which in general terms talks about how we are looking at various aspects of our city and how we are. Wanting to build the city and maintain the city. And as our. Uh, presentation will show you that our general plan specifically. Uh, addresses the issue of hotels and specifically says that we should encourage. Added hotel rooms within the limits of V A F zoning in order to increase T O T. So that's part of the. Uh, task of the general plan. And lastly, the third term that will be used is the north. North Fremont specific plan, and the North Fremont specific plan or any specific plan is basically a tool. That is consensus based, approved by the city council and councilman Hoffa actually. Uh, was part of the uh team that in two thousand fourteen, uh, the uh proved the original North Fremont specific plan. And the specific plan is is uh helps to implement. Uh, the general plans, goals, policies and objectives. So those uh, those three terms will be used by Levi. And I hope that uh explains a little bit of uh uh his presentation. The other background I wanted to say is, I wanted to share with you is, you will have um. Uh, a distinct task in front of you uh this afternoon, the recommendation by staff uh contains four sub recommendations. And we are approving, uh, we are strongly recommending approval for those proposed council actions. Uh, this is a project, in my opinion, that our city needs, and it needs to be realized. We have sixty eight hotels right now in the city of Monterey, the inventory that we have is rather mixed. Uh, we have a lot of hotels that are operated at a level uh where basically I can share that. Uh, the hotels need an update, they they, the inventory that we have is outdated, and it needs to compete. With the projects and with the products that are being built all around us, whether we look at seaside. Whether we look at the city of Pacific Grove, whether we look at uh Carmel or Marina. These are the products that we also need to have, the Abbott Hotel certainly fits right into that. Um. I talked about the North Fremont specific plan. Uh, here is, here are a few facts, and then uh I will ask Levi to take it on from there, and I I swear to you. I have not stolen his presentation. Um, hotels in the North Fremont uh uh Business District. Are the single most dominant use in that area. There are seventeen hotels on North Fremont with six hundred ninety hotel rooms. Most of the hotels have the design and room rates typical of budget to medium price hotels, and most of the hotels were developed. When North Fremont Street was a highway, when North Fremont Street was the main highway into Monterey. And so our, our staff's assessment of this project is. That this is a project that we really need at a time when we do not see a lot of investment into some of those motels, hotels that are really completely outdated. And hanging by a thread, and we also feel this is an incubator project for us that will hopefully. Uh, incentivize other developments that we are envisioning for that important district for the North Fremont Business District. You, the council, have given an operator license or want to give an operator license for commercial cannabis there. You know that we have a housing project lingering at the Eddy side, Eddy side, so this project. That we are presenting to you tonight with the four recommendations is uh the single most important project. Uh, this year and maybe for quite some time. And with that, I give it to Levi.
Thank you, Hans. Uh, good afternoon, council, Levi Hill, Planning Manager with the city's planning office. Uh, also with me today is Community Development Director Kim Cole and Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt. Uh, both of which have been working on this project for about the last two years. Uh, so the project for you today, uh, for consideration is, as Hans mentioned, uh, the North Fremont Street Hotel project. And uh, there's a few uh different layers to this project, so I'll try to. Uh, efficiently go through the presentation, and then I'm happy to circle back and touch on any finer points or answer any questions as needed. So today staff's bringing forward uh four recommendations, uh, that's to certify the environmental impact report. That was prepared as a part of this project, uh, prove the text amendments to the zoning code that are being proposed. Uh, prove the amendment to the North Fremont specific plan, and also to approve the use permit for the hotel and reduce loading space requirement. So, uh, the project description and uh, as you see on the slide, is uh involves the demolition of the existing one story hotel. Uh, it's an eighteen guest room hotel that's there today along with a one hundred and thirty four seat restaurant. Uh, the proposed project is a new four story forty two guest room hotel, the associated forty two space parking lot. And one loading space. And as it was previously mentioned, there are text amendments to both the North Fremont specific plan and the uh zoning ordinance as well as a part of this project. So a little background, uh, early in the application process for this project, there was a number of community engagement opportunities that were uh held. Uh, as you see here, on February seventeenth of two thousand twenty one, uh, the project was presented to the North Fremont uh Business Association. Uh, the month later, it was also presented at a community outreach meeting, and then also to the Villa Del Monte Neighborhood Association. Um, those events, uh, uh, the project was presented. Uh, in those events, and then the topics of interest that were raised, um, were parking, design, sidewalks, and pedestrian and bike safety. So this slide outlines the public process this project has undergone up to today. Uh, as you see, the project was considered at three different, three different planning commission meetings uh in two thousand twenty one. Uh, culminating in a unanimous approval at on the October twelfth, two thousand twenty one planning commission meeting. Uh, the project uh was subsequent subsequently appealed and then uh was considered at the. Uh, December twenty first, two thousand twenty one city council meeting. However, before consideration, uh, the project was tabled. Uh, to allow for additional time for environmental analysis, and uh, the city ultimately determined that environmental impact report. Was the appropriate level of review for this project. So as you see on this slide, uh, there's uh some dates there associated with the environmental impact report, uh, sequel process. Uh, notice of preparation was published in June twenty third, and the purpose of the notice of preparation is to solicit uh public input. Uh, for the scoping of the environmental review that's to be performed. Um, about a year later, um, on July seventh, two thousand twenty third, the draft E I R was published for the forty five day comment period. Uh, November seventeenth, responses to those comments were uh published and incorporated into the final E I R document. And uh, and then on November twenty eighth, the planning commission once again unanimously approved. Uh, recommend recommendations to the city council to approve this project, and that brings us to today's hearing. So a little bit about the project site, uh, it's located here at the intersection of North Fremont Street and Casa Verde Way. Property is zoned V A F, as Hans mentioned earlier, and it has a commercial general plan designation. Uh, the site is uh currently developed with a uh non operable eighteen guest room hotel and a non operable one hundred and thirty four seat restaurant. And it uh totals a little over half an acre in size. So this slide shows the surrounding area and the uses there that are surround the project site. Uh, primarily residential uses to the north, a mix of uh single family and multifamily. And then to the southeast and west is a mixture of commercial uses, including hotels, uh, nightclubs, uh, commercial offices, and then um some restaurants as well. Primarily, the commercial businesses are located along the North Fremont uh corridor. And that brings us to the project uh that's being proposed, and here the slide shows the site plan. Uh, as you see on this slide, the uh building is uh proposed to be sited near the intersection. Of Casa Verde Way and North Fremont Street, uh, way from the neighboring properties, has two access points, one from Casa Verde Way. And one from the North Fremont Street, uh, hotel entrance on North Fremont Street for pedestrian access. And then another uh hotel entrance on the backside of the building for uh visitors coming by automobile. Uh, the project proposes approximately twenty five thousand square feet of floor area. And is to be forty five stories in height or forty five feet in height, sorry, uh, forty five feet, four stories. However, with the topography of the side as it slopes away from North Fremont Street, would give the appearance of a three story building with a height of thirty five feet. So this table provides a comparison of the existing development with the proposed development. So as you'll see here, the product project does represent an increase in uh guest rooms. From the uh existing eighteen room hotel to uh forty two rooms, and also represents an increase in parking spaces. Um, however, it does uh represent a reduction in lot coverage and represents a reduction in uh impervious surface area as well. And would increase the landscaping that's uh provided on the site as uh compared to today. So this is a image taken from uh North Fremont. As you see here on this site, uh, on this slide, you had the uh former Crusus Corner Restaurant in the foreground. And then the uh former Casa Verde Inn in the background. This is a project rendering that's taken uh uh from the corner of uh North Fremont Street and Casa Verde Way. And I think this slide does a good job of representing the topography that's present on the site. As you can see, it slopes down going as you uh move down Casa Verde. And uh, as you see, it has the appearance of a three story structure along the front edge of North Fremont Street. This is another rendering, this is taken uh coming uh up Casa Verde uh way uh approaching North Fremont Street. So this would be the backside of the building, um, and then uh the automobile entryway there. This is another project rendering coming down North Fremont Street, so that uh where you see the car coming out there would be the access point that is located on North Fremont. And this is looking down that driveway. And this is a rendering looking down the driveway of the other access point on Casa Verde Way. So I'll touch a little bit more in detail on the environmental impact report that was prepared for this project. Uh, as I noted earlier, there was a notice of preparation that was published in June of two thousand twenty two. And then about a year later, we uh draft E I R was published for the forty five day uh comment period. We did receive two comments during that forty five day period. And then on uh November seventeenth, we provided responses to those comments. And publish those, and then also incorporated those into the final E I R document, which has been provided to uh you all today. So as I mentioned, two comments received during that draft E I R period. Uh, one from Derek Oliver, Finn and Keller, on behalf of the Maroon family, who is the adjacent property owner. Uh, they uh raised con concerns uh related to noise, uh, height, parking, safety, traffic and water. And then there's a second comment that was provided from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, however, that comment letter didn't actually raise any new concerns, uh, simply acknowledged that uh the draft uh E I R had been received, reviewed. And that the mitigation that was being proposed was sufficient, as none of it pertained to biological resources. So, uh, the results of the environmental impact report was that the project could result in potentially significant impacts, uh, pertaining to the topics that you see on the screen today. The mitigation measures, however, that were incorporated and recommended as a part of the E I R. Um, had the result of reducing all potential impacts to a less than significant level. And we'll touch on those mitigation measures a little bit more in detail. Um, so on the slide here is the two mitigation measures that were uh uh provided as a part of the environmental impact report that pertain to cultural resources. The first is a worker environmental awareness program, and this is a educational or training component. Uh, that is provided to the onsite construction workers, it's performed by a qualified archaeologist, and the purpose is to help. Uh, train and educate the workers on uh the uh information pertaining to cultural resources, how to. Uh, identify potential cultural resources, and then uh that kind of leads to the second mitigation measure here, which is what is the the protocol or process for. Uh, when cultural resources are discovered as a part of the project. Uh, so that's the second mitigation here is uh sets forth that process. Uh, essentially who to contact and what the protocol is and the steps necessary to address uh the. Unlikely discovery of a cultural resource during the construction of the project. Similarly, uh, there is a worker environmental awareness program for paleontological resources. Uh, very, very similar to the cultural resources, it's a training mechanism to help the workers uh identify potential paleo resources. Uh, including fossils, and then again, sets forth the second mitigation measure there, sets forth a process or protocol. As to what uh the workers are to do in the event uh that a uh fossil is discovered or any other paleo resource during the construction of the project. An additional uh mitigation measure that was uh included with the E I R is a hazardous materials mitigation measure. Uh, due to the age of the structure that's there today and the construction materials and methods that were used during that time. Uh, there is a possibility that some of these materials that have been found to be hazardous was uh used as a part of the construction. Um, so this mitigation measure outlines a process that requires a qualified professional to survey the uh existing site and the building. To uh determine whether or not these types of materials were used in the construction of the existing building and to abate uh those uh materials prior to demolition of the existing structure. And there are two mitigation measures associated with noise. And I'll note that both the potential impacts that were identified for noise pertain only to the construction of the proposed hotel. There were no potential impacts that were identified associated with the actual operation of the hotel. But I'll dive into these in a little bit more detail. So the first mitigation measure here is a construction noise control plan. And this requires that a plan be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the issuance of permits that addresses any, basically outlines the measures that are being taken to reduce noise impacts to neighboring properties. And things like this include a temporary sound barrier from the neighboring properties. Limitations on the idling of equipment, the noise and the duration of time that equipment that produces noise over a certain decibel level can be operated. And things of that nature. And then similarly, the same thing with the construction vibration control plan that you see here as mitigation measure. The second mitigation measure on this slide. And has similar limitations to the length of time that high vibration equipment can be used during the construction. Construction hour limitations and then notification requirements to adjacent property owners that this type of equipment is going to be used. And then finally, there's a tribal cultural resources mitigation measure. This is also similar to the cultural resources measure that we saw earlier today. In the unlikely event that there is a tribal cultural resource uncovered during the construction of this project, this mitigation measure outlines the appropriate path or procedures to be taken to adequately address those resources and the appropriate personnel to be contacted. So in summary, with those mitigation measures being applied to the project, the environmental impact report found that all impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level. So now I'll touch on the text amendments to both the North Fremont specific plan as well as the city zoning code. So as Hans mentioned, the North Fremont specific plan has has a different relationship with V A F properties than it does with other zone properties. And the clarification statements that are being incorporated into the North Fremont specific plan clarify that relationship to remove any ambiguity between those two documents. And as you see here, there's no substantive changes being proposed. It's simply clarifying language that makes that relationship clear. And Hans already provided a little bit of background on V A F. And I think a lot of, most of the council is already familiar with most of this, but it was adopted as a voter initiative and is lives in the charter. And of course, to change V A F properties or any of those standards would also require a voter initiative to change the charter. And as Hans mentioned, the charter remains the governing document for V A F properties. So with that, the text amendment that's being proposed to the North Fremont specific plan involves these two statements, the first being the V A F zone requirements for V A F zone properties apply as required in the city charter rather than specific plan development objectives, standards, and guidelines. And that the specific plan is a tool to implement, but not part of the general plan. So again, doesn't actually change any of the standards that are put set forth in the specific plan, doesn't change any of the standards that are set forth in the V A F section of the charter, just provides a clarifying statement in the document. And then the amendments that are being proposed as a part of the zoning ordinance are shown here. So the first is just a clarifying statement as it pertains to required parking for hotels and motels. So again, this is not actually changing the way that this requirement has been applied in the past. It's simply providing additional clarification. And as you see, the change that's being proposed is shown here in underline. And essentially just makes clear that the two additional parking spaces that are noted here to be required for every fifty rooms is not triggered until you have a hotel that includes fifty rooms. And then the other clarification statement that's being added to the zoning ordinance pertains to section thirty eight dash one one seven. And this section allows for a deviation or a reduction to the number of spaces provided for a use can be approved by the planning commissioner, in this case, city council. And what it does is it provides clarification that the reduction pertains to parking spaces and loading spaces. And also pertains to the number of spaces provided in addition to the dimensional size criteria that is outlined. And of course, those, these reductions are subject to the findings being made that are required in that section. And those findings are not being changed as a part of this amendment. And that brings us to the findings of approval. So the first finding is that for a use permit is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purpose of the zone. And staff's response is that the proposal meets the requirements of the charter and the B A F zone. The number of guest rooms, the stories, the required parking and all the development criteria included in the V A F section of the charter has been met with this project. And as noted earlier, the project's not subject to the North Fremont specific plan, so that does not apply. Second finding that would have to be made is that the proposed use and the conditions in which it would be operated are consistent with the general plan and would not be detrimental to the public or any adjacent neighborhood or properties and would not be detrimental to the general welfare of the city. And staff believes that this project satisfies that finding. The project is consistent with the general plan and the surrounding development. The subject site is a commercial land use designation in the general plan. The project satisfies multiple economic element policies, as previously noted, and would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, staff believes that it would be a substantial upgrade in that respect, given that the distance between the structures and the neighboring residential structures would be increased and that there would be enhanced landscaping, enhanced privacy and aesthetics as well. And just to touch on some of those economic policies, this project satisfies Program B five two, as Hans mentioned earlier, encourages the added hotel rooms within the limits of the V F zoning in order to increase T O T tax revenues. And then also Program B five three, which encourages hotel owners to upgrade facilities within the V A F envelope. The proposed project satisfies both of those policies. And of course, finding number three, that the proposed use would comply with any specific condition required for that use. And as I mentioned earlier, there's numerous mitigation measures that have been applied to this project and would be incorporated into the approval of this project. And the applicant would be required to abide by those conditions as well as the mitigation measures. And aside from the mitigation measures, there's also a special condition of approval that would require the applicant to grant an easement for pedestrian access along Casa Verde Way for a widened sidewalk there to increase pedestrian safety. We'll touch a little bit on the request for the reduced loading zone number and size. So here on this slide, you see depicted the location of the proposed loading zone and the reduced size. So typically, a project will require two, two loading zone spaces with dimensional criteria of twelve feet in width, twenty five feet in length, and then fourteen feet in height. As you see here, they're proposing a smaller, only one loading zone space with a smaller side dimensional size. As previously talked about in section thirty eight, one one seven does allow the planning commission, or in this case, the city council to approve less than the standard number of parking and or loading spaces as well as the dimensional criteria for those spaces, assuming that the required findings can be made. And those findings, finding A is that the parking demand would be less than the requirement in Schedule A or B of the zoning code. And the, we do have correspondence from the hotel that indicates that due to this being a select service hotel, they don't anticipate large scale deliveries. So there's no event space or banquet space included in this hotel. So like you would see maybe with the Marriott or the Portola that would necessitate large truck deliveries. The operator has indicated that they, at most, they would be receiving limited prepackaged food and snacks and your typical U P S and FedEx deliveries. So this loading space provided, based on what the operator, the information provided by the operator is sufficient for small band deliveries of the type that they receive. And and they also pointed out that in other parts of the state, they have had this, the standard loading space requirement has been reduced or waived, and it has not created any issues with the operations of those hotel locations. And the second finding that would need to be made for the reduced loading space is that the probable long term occupancy of the building or structure based on the design wouldn't generate additional parking demand. Staff reviewed the floor plan, as I said earlier, it's doesn't include any additional uses beyond the hotel use. There's no restaurants or bars or clubs associated with the use that are being proposed that would necessitate a larger parking demand. There's, and then if in the event in the future that they wanted to incorporate those types of uses into the development, the city code will require that the parking requirement for those uses be met at that time. So as mentioned earlier, this with the release of the final E I R, this project did go to the planning commission at the regularly scheduled November twenty eighth meeting. After they received the public, public comment at that meeting, reviewed the report, they did unanimously adopt resolutions that recommended the city council certify the E I R and approve all parts of the project. And some of those conditions of approval that they added. One is the correction of a typo that was look found on page one eighty of the final E I R. And that was actually corrected prior to the release of the packet for this meeting. But we wanted to go ahead and mention it as it was a condition that was added. But it was confirmed that there was a typographical error found on that page that was not, that was not consistent with the actual analysis. So that's since been corrected and confirmed that it was a typo. And it's shown here in underline. Second of condition, second condition of approval that was also added was the extension of the sound wall. So as previously mentioned, there's a temporary sound barrier to be constructed at the northern property line of the project site. During the meeting, it was expressed, there was concern that the location of that sound wall wasn't adequate and that it was requested by a neighboring property owner that the sound wall be extended along the eastern property line. The applicant agreed at that meeting that that would be something they would be willing to do. And so the planning commission added that as a condition of approval to extend that sound wall twenty five feet towards North Fremont, along the eastern property line. And as, as you see on this slide, you have the original proposed sound wall shown in orange there along the northern property line, and then the extension shown in the red dash line along the eastern property line. And with that, staff recommends that the city council certify the environmental impact report for the project introduced by title only and pass the first reading of the amendments to the city code. Approve the amendment to the North Fremont specific plan and approve the use permit for the hotel and reduced loading space. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to circle back on anything or answer any questions that you may have. And also the applicant is here as well.
Well, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the very clear presentation, Levi. So at this time, I think I would turn it over to council to hear if you have any questions for staff. Council, council member Barbara.
Oh, yes. Thank you for the presentation. Just had a few clarifying questions. I know you touched a little bit on this one when you talked about the increased sidewalks for pedestrians, but how else will this project impact the flow of pedestrians and bikes?
Yeah. So there was a, during the review of the project, there was a vertical obstruction. So Casa Verde Way already has a pretty narrow sidewalk there. In the review of the project, it was acknowledged that there is a vertical obstruction in the way of a light pole there. So the applicant was amenable to providing a pedestrian easement onto the private property to allow for a wider sidewalk in that location. Additionally, there's no, the way it's designed, there's no impacts and the environmental impact report didn't identify any impacts to the existing bike lanes there. So there was no negative impact seen to the existing pedestrian or bicycle flow.
Okay, so while, but while the project is there, can any enhancements be for the bike lanes? Since the project would be expanding, just curious about that. The other one was, has there been traffic analysis about the impact to this project? And if so, any type of modifications have they been proposed or considered?
Yeah, so the traffic wasn't analyzed as a part of the environmental review. And there were no significant impacts that were observed during that analysis. So as opposed to the existing site conditions.
Okay. That I just know that it's a lot of traffic in that area, especially in it's certain times of day. So I was just curious about that. So, okay, thank you.
I see Councilmember Garcia has his hand up, so go to him next.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Levi, for the recap. And my question was actually along the same lines as Councilwoman Barber. So I, I know that there's been concern from residents about that, that specific segment of Casa Verde right there leading up to the corner being a bit narrow. So I, my question is more kind of a confirmation that what we see in the rendering, which includes a little bit of landscaping leading up to the corner. Is that more or less in line with what the actual design, design plan show?
Yes, it is. The renderings are accurate to the design of today. I will note that the project still has to undergo architectural reviews through with the architectural review committee. So there is perhaps an event where there may be small modifications to the design. But the renderings, as shown with the landscaping, do align with the actual civil drawings and the, and the site plan that's been provided today.
Great, thank you. And I guess an additional question as I'm thinking about that segment. Because there is an access point off Casa Verde there for vehicles, any thought or any design ideas that have maybe have been mentioned or, or even included in the, in the design in terms of whether the E grid out of the property would be right, right only or, or if it would, if it would allow for left turn? Just curious.
It's my understanding that would allow for left turn as well. But I believe we have city engineering staff that may be able to speak to that in more detail.
I, I, at this point, I guess I I'm okay. I just was curious about that. And, and I think if we get to that point, maybe or once we get to the point of moving forward, if that's what, what what happens, then I think that would be also a good point to kind of keep in mind. I, I kind of going back to the point that there's a lot of traffic there and, and, you know, just thinking about the best way to improve the traffic flow out of that property. But that's, that's all I have in terms of questions. Thank you.
We'll go to Councilman Ed. Could I just follow up? Is the access point on North Fremont or Casa Verde? Because if it's on North Fremont, you couldn't take a left because of the bike lane in the center. Is that correct?
There's an access point on both. I was, I thought he was asking about the Casa Verde access point. But there is an access point on both front edges.
Okay, nobody, they wouldn't be able to take a left turn on the North Fremont access.
Not with the bike, no.
Okay, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Levi. There's one question I have on the proposed amendment on the section thirty eight dash thirty six on the number of street, off street parking spaces for doesn't apply to this hotel because it's below that number of hotel rooms. But are there any other properties that would be impacted by this modification of the off street parking requirement for rooms with fifty or more rooms?
There would not. That's so, as I stated earlier, that's actually how it's been applied in the past that those two additional spaces have not historically been required for hotels with less than fifty rooms. So it would not impact other, other properties.
Okay, great. On one of the pictures on packet page eleven, you had it up there on a slide. It shows the front of the property. Actually, looking at the corner Casa Verde and Fremont, there's some cars there. I'm wondering about the driveway that is on North Fremont entering the property. Is there any available off street parking on that curb line? Or does the turn pocket remove any off street parking in front of the? remove any off-street parking in front of the hotel? It's hard to tell where the driveway is. There's a red car that's shown in packet page photo eleven. Um, but I'm just wondering where the driveway ends and is there any parking in front of the driveway or is the parking all on the east side of the driveway access point?
So when you say driveway, are you talking about the North Fremont?
North Fremont.
Mm-hmm. So it's all, um, so as you see on the slide here. So as you come in, uh, where you see that orange arrow.
Right.
There is parking um, beginning almost immediately to the right there on, along the eastern property line, and it's all on the eastern side of the lot. Except for you do have the one space uh, just past the, that kind of jog out of the building.
Okay, so Levi, I'm not talking about onsite parking, talking about curbside off-property.
Got it.
As you approach the hotel driveway. Is there any parking on the curb? Past the driveway?
I don't believe so. Um.
I just don't know the length of the hotel property.
Yeah.
And then when the turn lane starts, is there any room for curbside parking there that does not interfere with the number two lane?
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm not sure. I know that there's no street parking associated with this project that's being proposed, but I'm, I'm unfortunately, I can't speak to the existing condition of, of that curb.
Okay, okay. Uh, and, and that's to, you know, determine as we get a little closer, but I just wanted to determine where, and I know as people arrive for hotels, they might drive right past the driveway and they realize, oh, it's there and then pull to the curb, the office is right there. So the arrival of guests helps to mitigate the congestion at an intersection.
Yeah, and I think the pri- the, as you, as you can kind of see from the, one of the renderings, the primary vehicular entryway is going to be from the Casa Verde frontage where they have kind of the uh, pull-in and drop-off area that you typically see with hotels.
Yeah, we, we hope so.
Yeah.
It depends on what Google tells people.
Yeah, if I try to answer this, we have a red curb uh, actually uh, in the middle of, of that area where there is a bus stop right now by M S T. That is uh, basically, if you look at this rendering on the screen right now, you see the driveway. And to the left of that is a, is a red curb where the jazz line uh, parks. So that is a bus stop there with a reinforced concrete bus pad uh, a little bit bulked out. And then directly following that towards uh, uh, Chaflis in that area, there was a red curb, an existing red curb in front of the restaurant that prohibited parking. Uh, now uh, Casa Verde in had there also an entry into the other part of the driveway. So you you had an entry to the east and to the west of the park of the bus station uh, or of the bus uh, stop. So uh, red curb directly at the corner to Casa Verde Way, and then you had a driveway going uh, in and out there. Bus stop and driveway going in and out. Now, while the whole hotel now is, you have probably still the bus stop there. You have the driveway to the right and um, I don't know if we want to keep the red curb there or not. It's probably advisable. The next parking opportunity is directly to the west, uh, to the east of the driveway in front of the next motel. There are clearly marked T bars indicating where to park. But the existing parking right now, uh, as it was in the previous configuration is probably the same as it is in this configuration.
Okay, great. Um, the other question I had was on the north, now you made a comment and I just want to understand the context of this. The North Fremont specific plan is not part of the general plan. And I, I just want to understand what your statement was for the reference of this project. Does that mean that this project doesn't need to consider the North Fremont plan because there's nothing in that plan that applies to this hotel? I just need to know a little bit more context for that.
Sure. And yes, I think that is a correct understanding. So uh, as you said, the specific plan is a tool to further implement the vision and the policies within the general plan. With the adoption of the specific plan, uh, it does apply to all properties within the boundaries of the North Fremont specific plan with the exception of the V A F properties, since those properties are governed by the charter, which as you all know, would require a voter initiative to actually amend that, those sections of the charter. So, and those properties are zoned V A F again as a part of the charter. So, and specifically tied to this project, you're correct. Those standards of the North Fremont specific plan do not apply to this site.
Okay, and I'm just remembering on the level of the hotel being three stories prior to the North Fremont specific plan, it would have restricted three stories.
Well, the V A F actually, well, the V F, the standards have been in place for some time and they actually don't contain a height limitation.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, I think to answer your question, if it were not V A F zoned, the North Fremont specific plan would have limitations on the height of the structure.
Okay.
But since it is V A F zoned and it's not subject to those standards, there is not.
So in other words, it's a voter-approved ballot measure which drives the greater of the statutes.
That's correct.
That is the controlling element of the decision point. So, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Chair, that's the only question I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got a few questions, so just kind of wanted to follow up councilmember Ed's line of questioning there. So when we approved the North Fremont specific plan, I don't remember that distinction. I mean, I remember talking about the charter and how the number and whether we wanted to increase or decrease the number of hotel and visitor accommodation facilities would require an amendment. I don't remember at that time being told that um, that area would not be governed by the specific plan. So I guess I'm trying to understand, is that a legal determination that has kind of been arrived at since we approved it? Or did I miss something nine years ago? I'm not just remembering. Maybe that'd be for you, Chrissy. I don't know.
So that's always been the legal um, position and interpretation. I think this amendment just makes it much more clear than it reads on paper.
Okay, so are you saying that um, this is a policy decision? Or are we legally bound by this?
It's, it's legally um, bound to follow the charter and the charter um, provisions as applied to this project as opposed to the specific plan.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then I had a question. I've heard some, from some, unless Kim has something to add on to that. Go ahead, Kim.
Um, so the specific plan on page twenty-five, you may not remember it, but we actually had this conversation in detail. And um, we talked about encouraging an amendment to the V A F zone
Mm-hmm.
to allow this. And in fact, I'm going to read from page twenty-five of the specific plan. It says, added development potential is not an available incentive to modernize those hotels, hotels unless the V A F hotel zoning ordinance provisions are modified to allow a greater flexibility. So if you remember back to that time period, staff was suggesting that we should amend the V A F to allow the hotels to expand, possibly take the total number on the street, allow redevelopment on one site so we could spur on development. South Lake Tahoe has done this. You know, it's like, how do we incentivize these really small hotels to rehabilitate? And so, um, and at the time, the council understood that and understood that the V A F amendment needed to happen if we were going to allow um, greater flexibility with V A F zoning.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, I'm also hearing from some residents who ask, well, boy, why couldn't we instead build housing there? I think I understand that it has to do with the V A F and would require an amendment, charter amendment and a vote of the people if the property owner and city wanted to do so. Could you um, speak to that? Um, and clarify if my understanding is correct.
Your understanding is correct. The V A F zoning does not allow for housing. Um, so you're, you are correct.
Okay, and then um, so I, I had a question about the height because I, I did remember that the North Fremont specific plan, you know, limited height I think two stories by right and three stories, you know, by, by, by exemption. But so what you're saying is this not being governed by it and the general plan doesn't speak to height here. There is no height, not height uh, requirement in play, so to speak.
Not associated with the V A F property. You're correct.
Okay. And then I've heard from some residents that are concerned about the appearance of the proposed uh, project. And could you clarify, so for folks who may have concerns, the process for them would be to participate in the architectural review process? If they were unhappy with the outcome of that process, presumably they could appeal it to the planning commission and, and so on. Is that uh, is my understanding of that correct?
It is. That is correct.
Okay. Um, I think those are all my questions, so um, if there's no other questions from council, we would open it up for public comment. If folks in the chamber would like to speak and if you're um, able to stand, it would be great to maybe see how many want to speak um, by standing over there. Uh, I see one, I see two, I see. Yeah, if you could maybe just line up over there on the, on the side, so we can see how many. And if you, if you, it's uh, physically challenging to stand, if you could just raise your hand and hold your hand if you want to speak. Okay, so I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in the chamber. Is there anyone else in the chamber who's wanting to speak on this? Okay, anyone online? How many do we have online? So if, if the folks uh, who are online or on Zoom or if you want to speak this, uh, please in the next uh, ten seconds, raise your electronic hand. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. How many folks do we have?
We have five.
Five, so we have twelve. Twelve times three would be thirty-six minutes. Um, we okay with giving everyone up to three minutes, council? Okay, so with that, we're going to close the opportunity. Those seven folks inside and the five folks online will all have up to three minutes each, and we look forward to hearing your comments, please.
I, I just want to um,
Yeah.
Uh, refer back to our um, uh, script.
Uh, oh, I should be reading something, okay.
Since Mr. Lombardo is uh, representing the project.
Okay.
Applicant, he has ten minutes.
Okay.
He'll have three.
Okay, so Mr. Lombardo, you may proceed and uh, staff um, will give him ten minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hoff and members of the council. I hope not to take ten minutes. I, I'd like to compliment uh, Hans and his staff for the incredible work they've done over the last three years and the last two years in particular to address uh, what is an unfortunate result of uh, the ability to use the California Environmental Quality Act as a weapon. Uh, if you oppose properties being developed. This site is about a half acre in size. Under California law, urban sites like this, up to five acres, meaning ten times larger, would normally be allowed to proceed based on what's called a categorical exemption, meaning there is no environmental analysis allowed because of the urban nature and the zoning consistency of the project. Uh, unfortunately, in this case, between the city and the applicant, I think they've spent over a quarter of a million dollars in the last two years preparing a very thorough, adequate environmental impact report which concluded the same conclude, reached the same conclusions that the cities had reached in twenty-twenty when the project was applied for, that there were no significant unmitigable environmental impacts resulting from this project and that the project should be approved as being consistent with the V A F zoning and the neighborhood policies and plans. As you probably saw in my letter I sent yesterday, there has been a determined effort to mischaracterize the project by the project opponent and to create uh, controversy in the virtual world and the Nextdoor app, which you probably are familiar with. Uh, by making statements about the project and the city staff and the, and the city staff's interpretation of the code, which are not true and which were in in my mind, attempting to create controversy where there shouldn't be any and criticize unfairly the actions of the city staff. So uh, the planning commission actually not only approved this unanimously once, it actually approved it unanimously twice. Uh, originally in twenty-twenty-one and then again last month. Uh, so uh, just quickly to answer uh, a couple of the council's questions, uh, pedestrian access is being improved because on North Fremont Street, there are now two driveways coming out of the property. Uh, there will be, that will be reduced to one. Uh, and as staff mentioned, because of the existing utility infrastructure there, there's a limited access on the sidewalk on the, near the corner, and that's going to be improved because the building is going to provide uh, additional pedestrian access on the property side. Traffic impacts were analyzed again very thoroughly. There was a conclusion it would not significantly impact traffic. But because we're now having a second entrance onto Casa Verde, po- prod- traffic leaving the site does not have to enter North Fremont Street. In other words, you could turn right to get to Highway One without coming out onto North Fremont Street and adding additional traffic on North Fremont. Uh, whether or not it would be a left in or left out only, uh, I don't know. That's something the city traffic engineer would determine, but uh, I suspect that uh, based on the analysis in the E I R, that's not necessitated. Uh, the applicant has bent over backwards to try and satisfy the next-door neighbor who opposes the project. They agreed to build a sound wall that the E I R concluded was not necessary. They agreed to extend the sound wall at the prior to the planning commission meeting, at the first planning commission meeting. And again, at the second planning commission meeting in order to address the request of the next-door neighbor, even though the E I R said it wasn't necessary. So uh, this is a almost lifetime resident of Monterey and the Peninsula. I moved here when I was seven and I'm almost sixty-seven. So that's a while. Uh, I, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to take this step to build uh, which will be the first, I think maybe the first avid hotel in California. It's certainly in Northern California with this project, uh, take the leap of faith that North Fremont can be improved and should be improved and provide a project that will uh, be a benefit uh, to the, to the entire city and not detrimentally impact anyone. Uh, the, the council may uh, recall the De Anza Inn, which is a little further up North Fremont Street, and this project is basically the same sized project, very, very similar in height uh, and scale. So uh, councilmember Garcia, I do appreciate your efforts to participate today uh, in light of your personal situation. Thank you for making time to, to attend the hearing today. And um, it's been a long road for a project that should have been considered at least two, if not three years ago. Uh, unfortunately, in the three years, of course, construction has not gotten cheaper, borrowing has not gotten cheaper. The opposite is the case and we prepared to move forward with this project as quickly as possible. Once uh, your council finishes its deliberations and we would respectfully request that you support the planning commission's unanimous decision to recommend approval to the project. And just in closing, I would say there was also correspondence this week alleging that the actions of the city would violate state law. Uh, these charter, the charter language can't be amended except by the voters, which is why we're, V A F is the controlling instrument. But the other amendments that are being requested by staff are not amendments to the charter. Their clarification of the city code because, not because it's, the staff doesn't know what the code means and the council doesn't know what the code means. It's because there have been threats of litigation if this project's approved and we need to make sure that a court knows what the code means. And so these clarifications are really in, to be instructive in terms of what the code is meant to mean. In other words, just using the example of the fifty-room addition requirement for two spaces. If the code meant you had to have additional parking spaces for less than fifty rooms, it would say if you had twenty-five, you needed one, and if you had fifty, you needed two. Uh, but that's not what it means and that's not how it's ever been interpreted. But we wanted to make sure that if these threats are turned into reality, we have the best chance of showing a judge how the city council a- arrived at its decision and that it was the correct decision. So I have three minutes left in case I'd like to speak maybe in rebuttal. If there's any comments, I'll hopefully not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next speaker, please. Um, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Marum. Our family came to Monterey in 1959, where our parents were instructors at the DLI, worked hard, and became successful business and property owners while raising me and my three sisters. Mr. Lombardo's criticism of our family for our participation in the public process by expressing and pursuing good faith concerns and objections to the project is astonishing, shameful, contrary to public policy, yet unsurprising and unpersuasive. He's been doing this for a long time and knows or should know better. In Mr. Lombardo's second letter dated December 14th, 2023, Mr. Lombardo contends there's no evidence that supports the opponent's interpretation of the city code. The mere fact that the city is considering an amendment is very good evidence that our interpretation is correct. If our interpretation of the parking regulations is incorrect, as urged by Mr. Lombardo, then there should be no need for an amendment, amendment, whether for clarity or otherwise. Yet the proposed amendment remains, the result of which, at least as applied to the project, will reduce the parking regulations in violation of the city charter. Ultimately, that proposed amendment to reduce the parking regulations in an already suffering from insufficient, that's already suffering from insufficient parking and related bad traffic must be put to a vote of the people for the city to decide. In that same letter, Mr. Lombardo also complains that our lawyer submitted a, a letter approximately 24 hours before tomorrow's meeting, meaning today, while acknowledging that the issues raised in the letter restates an argument made two years ago. Indeed, the letter serves to highlight the highlight and remind the city of an important issue, not raise a new issue at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
My name is Leila Marum, also part of the uh, partnership that owns the adjacent apartment building. We are opposed to this project as currently planned. The city, we believe, has gone out of their way to allow noncompliance to the applicants and push the project through to a point that instead of the applicant meeting the requirements, the requirements are being changed to meet the applicant's proposal. We view the city's proposed wording revisions to the requirements as changes, not clarifications. The parking requirements are not being met both in the number of parking spaces required nor the size. We constantly have cars parking in our property next door in front of signs that say no parking towway zone, even when it's not a special occasion like a fairgrounds event. The VAF Section 35151A states there shall be no reduction in the parking requirements for visitor accommodation facilities. Monterey City Charter Appendix A to Section 8.1 states the off street parking requirements for the project cannot be reduced absent a voter-approved amendment to the city charter. Despite this, there are changes to both the number and size of parking spaces for the project. The current city code requirement is one space per guest room plus two for every 50 rooms, which is 44 required spaces instead of the 42 spaces pro- provided. The previous submitted letter from Henry Runkey confirms this as well as the included city's project data sheet for the proposed avid hotel and memo from Public Works stating 44 stalls are required and 42 are proposed. The city has also waived the story poll requirements as detailed in our submitted letter. There is, there are viable alternatives to set this system up. The notice of this meeting was first posted by a Mon- Monterey residence on Nextdoor. It is apparent from the many responses to this that many residents know nothing about this proposed project. There is also still an unsafe narrow sidewalk with electrical poles and power lines along the Casa Verde side of the proposed avid hotel. This is shown in submitted photos and the submitted email correspondence between city planner and project architect, which states civil mention the corner will become a tripping hazard, hazard, and the only way around this would be to underground utilities, which we obviously don't want to pay for. Sitting planning staff responded, I think you do not need to show unless asked. I have removed the sidewalk-related graphics from my draft PowerPoint and only included the Google Street View photo that you sent to me. I am unaware of any actions taken to address the safety issue.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. If you have more that you'd like to share, please send them by email to the council. We'd love to see them. Um, next speaker, please.
And thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Hoff and members of the council. I'm Luisa Soria, former a planning commissioner. Um, I was part of this subcommittee of the planning commission nine, 10 years ago when we adopted the uh, North Fremont specific plan. Um, just wanted to, as, as Kim mentioned, we were always keenly aware of the subtle differences between what we were trying to do with the North Fremont specific plan and what the requirements were of the VHF zoning district. So we were always aware that that, you know, the, the hotel sites were not going to be subject to the, to what we were trying to do with the North Fremont specific plan. This project, however, just because of the nature of what it is, uh, it's, it's consistent with what it's, with the North Fremont specific plan is trying to do, which is to create an environment that is going to take North Fremont from the 1950s environment that has been forever. And from that point of view, I mean, um, I don't think there's any, any, any question of what the city council's action should be. Uh, there, there, there is a point where, where the individual rights, you know, there's that boundary between individual rights and the rights of the, of the community, and I think the, again, the overarching benefit here is for the community. I mean, when you, when you hear the arguments and the points, there's a discussion about two parking spaces. I mean, come on. This is 2021. There's all this thing about how parking is bad, and, and so that's really not an issue. It should not be an issue for you to consider. And then the same for the loading space. Um, so this thing has been going on, as Mr. Lombardo said, you know, eh, the sequel has been abused by a lot of people, and this is clearly a case of that. S- subjecting applicants to unnecessary expenditures and staff to a necessary time and all that. This is a no-brainer for the city council. And just one comment about the design. I think the council, just as a suggestion, could direct the commission and the ARC to consider, you know, requiring design that is not so, so much of this corporate um, look like we did with the McDonald's building on Del Monte Avenue, where that McDonald's building looks nothing like the corporate McDonald's image, and it can be done. Because this building, I mean, it's a nice looking building, but it's, it's got that corporate look. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Sorio. And next speaker, please.
Afternoon, council. Uh, Dwayne Peterson, Villa Del Monte Neighborhood. I don't know, when I read this thing, it kind of seemed like we're getting ready to pound a square peg into a round hole. Uh, it just, parking is an issue. I live one block away from there, and I've got people who are from two to three blocks away parking on my street because parking is an issue in that area. And this is before the project. Uh, there's numerous locations in the city that have underground parking. Can't someone dig and kind of take care of parking spots? Either, maybe not dig, but maybe, you know, underneath the building. That's, several places have got that already. I don't know why that hasn't been addressed or looked at. And where is staff and employees supposed to park? You got enough room for people in their rooms if they fill all the rooms. Are they gonna be out on the street with us again? Or uh, maybe the developer or whoever runs a hotel is gonna maybe have a shuttle system so they park elsewhere? I don't know. But that is an issue. Uh, and I, I, I agree with the comment that it looks like a lot of gyrations and hoop jumping went to get this project going. Uh, I'm just kind of wondering who's in charge. Is the city or the developer? Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Peterson. Next speaker, please.
Uh, my name is John McClellan, uh, and I'm a resident of the Adel Monte Neighborhood. Um, and like Dwayne, I think parking is an issue, was I, I live in the neighborhood. And um, and I think um, i- if so much time is being spent trying to work this out, maybe it could have been worked out a little better from the start. Um, more, uh, I, I think the lack of parking is gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood. And as you point out, the building is further away from the neighbors than, than what's existing there now. But the, the new construction is a lot taller. So I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood, to the neighbors because of the height and the parking, and it's a very crowded uh, parking area. So I, I, I like Dwayne, I think the workers or maybe some of the rooms might have more than one car. Um, I, I think parking is an issue, and, and I think it could be worked out. Oh, so I object. I, I wrote a letter o- objecting to this in 2021, which I, I think probably got ignored. But anyway, so I do object to it as it stands, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McCollum. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mary Pendley, and I shop in this area every day. So I know that replacing a hotel with a hotel is a great idea. I'm all for it. But you need to reduce the size. Okay, and parking has been mentioned, but again, you get the parking issue with the Monterey Fairgrounds, visitors and events people. Okay, that's an issue. There is no parking along Fremont Street. Casa Verde happens to be an exit for Highway One. So when I am on that hill and I'm going up there to the Fremont Street, I'm backed up. You're gonna have a left turn lane into the hotel. I just think you might want to rethink this a little bit, and I did see some other options in terms of height, size. What about reducing it to three, two, maybe one story? The underground parking may work, but just so that you're aware, everybody wants to park in the Spa Hotel parking lot. There are signs that are put up there for CVS Pharmacy, don't park there. So I'm just asking that that be another consideration when you review. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Um, so I think that concludes the um, in the chamber comments. We'll go to online comments at this time.
Yes, first I'll call in Mr. Glenser.
Hi, are you hearing me? Hello?
Still here, yeah.
Okay, great. But I'm Kent, I'm Kent Glenser. Um, and uh, I'm gonna take this in a little bit of a different direction. Um, I'm kind of really interested in connecting this particular um, issue, and everyone's done a great job on this particular issue, looking at um, the ER and such. I want to connect it to Rena. Um, and I, I want to connect it to Christie Sabado's memo from the end of May, revised June 7th, um, which was titled Preliminary Site Inventory and Strategies Related to the Rena Requirement. And I'm reading from page four, high density, and this is about the Fremont corridor. High-density residential uses are conditionally permitted on commercial properties along the corridor skipping. Now, next is, in the recent citywide survey, community members expressed strong support for housing along North Fremont, particularly apartments low-rise and mid-rise, and townhomes. Many respondents expressed support for reimagining the area as a walkable mixed-use corridor that provides attainable housing options together with retail restaurants and daily services. Want to repeat, I'm just reading from a memo from Christie Sabado, the associate planner for the city at the end of May. Following that, to help facilitate this vision and integrate new housing along the eastern portion of the corridor, following strategies are proposed. One, revised city land use and zoning regulations to permit up to 45 DUAC on all properties fronting Fremont with no change to permitted building heights. Two, revised city policy and regulations to incorporate a clear statement that 100% residential projects are permitted along the eastern segment of the North Fremont corridor. Three, to further the community vision for the area, identify incentives that can be offered for mixed-use projects with residential, retail, restaurants, or daily services. On this basis, the preliminary inventory assumes development of 308 new housing units, including 188 that would be affordable to households, making less than 80% of the area median income sites are shown on map two. The site we're talking about is shown on map two. So I just want the city council to be considering this as you perhaps make a very narrow decision about an EIR for this, um, because it's connected to Rena, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
It's, thank you for your comment, Mr. Glenser. Uh, next commenter, next speaker, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Rosello.
Good evening, Monterey City Council. Richard Rosello, speaking for myself. Uh, when I moved here, by the way, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. When I moved here, Fremont was called Fremont Boulevard, and it was Highway One. It was the main entry into Monterey. The commercial strip was very vibrant there. We had many businesses serving the local residents. Almost all those businesses are gone. The motels were old then, back before the freeway. Now, they're very dilapidated. Uh, what I want you to look at is the economic future of North Fremont Street. Uh, CBS declared bankruptcy a few months ago. They're closing 900 stores in the United States. Rite Aid declared bankruptcy. They're closing 400 stores, and Walgreens says they're going to cl- uh, declare bankruptcy within two to three months. If those businesses go out, if CBS leases North Fremont, North Fremont businesses are dying. They're failing. The inflation, uh, the recession, the lost jobs are directly affecting the economic impact. We need a shot of new construction. When I first saw this building, I'm an old guy. The modern design, which is basically a box using paint as architectural element, is offensive to us of that generation. But I do understand that is the market. It's an economic reality. That's what the market wants right now. The market isn't us, it's younger people. The only time I can see the parking being exceeded are in three events. I would say Car Week, AT&amp;T, and possibly Cali Roots. I cannot see a full room 100% occupancy in any other situation. Uh, in that case, I would think a shuttle for the employees would be sufficient. They could park in a nearby area and shuttle the employees in. But other than that, Eddie's is stalled, and mainly, I'm very worried about this avid being able to construct it, given today's construction costs. That's why Eddie's is stalled. It tripled or quadrupled in price, economically infeasible. So I wish them well, and the economic realities are going to be very trying, and the city really needs a TOT. Please look up the Casa Verde Inn and Yelp, and you'll see what it replaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Mr. Rosello, and next speaker, please.
Yes, this is a telephone caller with the last three digits, five zero zero.
Go ahead, speaker, uh, five with uh, phone number five zero zero. We're ready for your comment.
You'll need to dial star six to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry. Uh, this is Wendy Brickman. I handle the marketing for the North Fremont Business District. I am there all the time. And I definitely am in favor of the construction of the new avid hotel and accepting the city staff's recommendations. To me, it's an exciting opportunity that should not be missed. When the hotel is built and it opens, I anticipate a very positive impact on the district and the adjacent neighborhoods. Introducing a contemporary establishment certainly promises an increase in tourism and TOT tax for the city of Monterey, which is in part reinvested in neighborhood improvement projects, plus an increase in employment opportunities and a subsequent rise in foot traffic. The placement of a modern avid hotel on a dilapidated vacant site that was a hotel for decades will help stimulate will help stimulate further investments in an area that has helped that has experienced a prolonged period of stagnation. Additionally, the hotel's design aims to enhance the overall environment. Modern and it'll probably be quieter than the sprawling Casa Verde Inn and Caruso's Restaurant. And it's important to me and to so many others that we lose the undeserved label of being the less favorable part of town, especially when considering Monterey's reputation as a highly sought-after destination for both tourists and residents alike. There's just a true need for revitalization on North Fremont. The whole district is in a great location adjacent to fair events, the freeway, and it has enormous potential for both residents and visitors. Neglecting investments in new structures on North Fremont, like the avid hotel project, as Richard just said, could trigger a decline in property values across the three neighborhoods for all property owners. And I feel it's important to build it now as the escalating construction costs pose a barrier to new developments such as the twenty-two-hundred North Fremont apartment building, which I may add has a modern design in harmony with this one. And the twenty-two-hundred North Fremont apartment building has been unable to move forward since COVID began, potentially leading to more business closures, a scenario very detrimental to all of us. And to address concerns about traffic, I propose to explore alternative solutions such as shuttle services for employees during the three major events that Richard mentioned, ensuring the traffic and congestion are efficiently managed. So I strongly urge the city council to approve the avid hotel project and move forward with them soon. Agreeing with Hans, it is definitely a project we really need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Wendy. Next speaker, please.
There are no further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so if there's no further hands raised, then we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. I'll bring it back to council for any additional questions and comments. One moment, though, please. Yes, city attorney.
Hi, we just we noticed there was one omission that didn't make it into the use permit resolution. We would ask that any motion to approve the use permit include the statement denying all and any appeals of decisions of the planning commission there too. And I'll be sure to send this to the city clerk.
That was denying all and any appeals to the planning commission. And what was the rest of it?
Oh, just there too.
There too. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and I'm sure you'll remind us if we forget about that one, should we get to the point of making a motion? All right, I saw council member.
I think she hit her hand.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, council member Barbara, please.
Yes, so thank you for all of your well-thought-out comments and what you talked about. So I'm just curious as to some of the answers in addressing the signage part. And I don't know who this will go to in the planning department, but as far as the signage and the conformity of that and what process would that look like? Is that just part of what the applicant would go through? That's one of my questions.
And that was for signage, you said? Yeah, so signage for VAF properties is required to be approved by the Architectural Review Committee. So that's part of the architectural.
Already that's kind of already going to be addressed. That's right. And so have they talked about the employee parking as such? Have they addressed? Has that been addressed in the applicant's packet? And I'm just curious about that part because that was brought up and I was curious about that.
Yeah, so not in detail as far as operational goes, the requirement, as you saw earlier, was one per room. So that would be forty-two rooms of forty-two spaces. So that's how the project's evaluated. I don't know the applicant or the representative may have more information if there's an operational plan for that. I would say I think that that and when thinking about that, it makes the assumption, there's the assumption that's made that every guest of the hotel would be driving an individual car. And that's not always the case. So something to be cognizant of and thinking that issue through. But I don't know if the applicant's representative has any further information on that.
I think we wait and just see if there's other questions and then we'll ask the applicant to address kind of all of them that might come up. So please continue if you have other questions.
So I'll continue with the other part. I was curious of whether underground parking was researched or looked at and if that's part of the applicant question, that's fine. I was curious about that. And then off of the last one about how Christie's report dealing with Rena compares to the VAF zoning.
Yeah, so as it pertains to the underground parking, it was not ever proposed as a part of the project. I don't know about the feasibility, given the slope of the site, if that would actually be feasible for this project, since it's had such a higher grade along North Fremont than it does at the rear of the property.
Okay.
And I think because they were able to satisfy the parking requirement with surface parking, it probably wasn't evaluated very closely. As it pertains to the Rena and the housing element process, I was able to confirm and looking at our housing sites, the site has not been included as a potential housing site in our housing element.
Okay, thank you.
Any, I see council member Garcia has his hand up, so we'll go to him next.
Yes, thank you. Just comments. So I live in District Four and I drive through North Fremont pretty much on a daily and I that the just the idea of having the current structure torn down and something built on that property is exciting to me because I've been seeing the current structure there just sit empty for a few years now and every every week, every month that goes by, it just gets worse. But I really appreciate all the the comments that the public has shared with us this afternoon, whether I agree with them or not, you know, I really appreciate folks coming out and sharing their concerns. I will say that for for me, this item is definitely about the hotel. I mean, I really like the idea, like I said, of having a new structure there. But but more than that, for me, it's potentially the the jumpstart of a revitalization process for the entire corridor of North Fremont. I've had multiple conversations with our residents in that area who tend to favor a change and in a change that that has been long coming for North Fremont. This potentially could be that opportunity where a new structure come in comes into place and motivates other other businesses, other current businesses to really you know, participate in the in the revitalizing of of that whole area. I think it's important for our residents. And I think it's really a a good opportunity to jump on and show our constituents that we are interested in in changing what is currently North Fremont. You know, we have a lot of businesses who are currently on that stretch and also express hardships with the amount of business that's coming into that area or not coming into that area. And and aside from our businesses, like I mentioned earlier, our residents, you know, we have conversations about just the the desire to be able from our homes to walk over to North Fremont and, you know, meet up with other neighbors or just, you know, just take a stroll through the neighborhood neighborhood. At the moment, North Fremont is not that place. So I think there's appetite from our residents and I hear the concerns. But I think this this opportunity really is an opportunity for the long-term investment and beautification of our whole area. And and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Smith, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No questions, comments.
Go ahead with your comments.
Let me ask one question and then maybe since we've all commented, it's time for Mr. Lombard to come back up and he can answer that question with his remaining time.
Well, I'm going to have some questions to add for him also.
Okay, so the question I'd have for Tony and then I'll save my comments for when you're done. I think was a question that had to do and the theme was some of our callers this thought of, well, we have a forty-two-room hotel and we have forty-two parking spaces. And where do the employees park if there's only forty-two spaces? I'd like to hear a little more of the thought in terms of I know that most hotels are not running at a hundred percent from time to key weekends, maybe they are. But there's a bus stop right out front. Employees come and go for the shifts and the demand, but I'd like to know basically during the day, how many employees do we suspect that there would be on site? And I know maids are later in the morning, nine thirty, ten, they they start to roll in and people are checking out. So I'd like to hear from the developer's attorney if they have a sense of how many employees would be on site during the day if they know.
Thank you very much. So I also had some questions I'd like to hear from the applicant. Like to hear their response. So one we've heard has to do with the employee kind of how many employees on site at different times. And then just sort of in general, I think Councilwoman Barber was wanting to know if they if they have a plan for addressing employee parking. So we had some other comments from the public that I'm just kind of wondering if the applicant could respond to. One was a suggestion from Mr. Ricciello and also Wendy Brickman brought it up, which is maybe on those days where there are big events that we know parking becomes a premium, would the applicant be amenable to you know, requiring or providing an employee shuttle for those days? And then two, there was a comment or a suggestion from Luisa Soria that in approval, that council might direct the ARC to look at the design and seek a design that would be sort of less corporate and sort of less stock in terms of the appearance. So I'm wondering if you could, if the applicant would be amenable to those kind of requirements being added to an approval and then as well as if you could address the 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 question of just employee parking plan in general. So like to hear from you now if you're able.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hoffa, members of the council. So in in no particular order of importance because they're all important, but so I'll start with Councilmember Barber's questions about underground parking. Unfortunately, due or reality due to the topography of the site because it slopes so significantly, there really isn't an opportunity unless you build a giant hole in the ground. The other is that parking structures are underground parking structures are extremely expensive. You're basically building an underground bunker that has to withstand the weight of the building on top of it. And so the it's even if it were physically possible, which it's not because of the topography, it wouldn't be economically possible in a project like this one, this small limited service hotel. I think on housing, staff has answered it. I think you you've asked the questions. It's not permitted in this and it was never sounds like it was never calculated into arena numbers that the any VAF site would be available for housing. As to the parking numbers, the applicant designed a project that meets the code requirement. That's the city parking ordinance or the city code requires this number of parking spaces for this number of hotel rooms. However, as this applicant has demonstrated year after year after year, they're absolutely willing to work with the city and have no objection to an additional condition requiring them that during the peak, you know, events as as Richard said and Wendy said, you know, the Car Week, the whatever, that they will implement a parking shuttle program. As Councilmember Smith alluded to, the hotels in Monterey and the city manager may have a more current figure than I do, but usually it's in the mid to low seventy percent average occupancy. For for sake of argument, let's say it was eighty, which I would, you know, the hotel owners would jump up and down if they got to eighty. But that leaves, you know, nine vacant spaces during, you know, for parking spaces on property during a high average, you know, occupancy. So there's, that's probably why the city code is written the way it is. I don't know how it came to be that to require one space per room, basically. Because there have always been employees for hotels clearly, but it's probably because there's generally vacancies almost always and that those spaces are available. But the applicant will agree to add a condition if the council would like to do that, requiring that they prepare a shuttle service program for employees during high volume. We can, you know, the maximum event weekends that we that we've talked about. So is, I don't know, was, did I miss any? Did I forget one?
Yeah, I think there was one more. Oh, the design, would they obey completely wed to this particular appearance or would they be open to some modification?
Yeah, the the answer is because this is a branded product, you know, avid hotel is a is a national or international brand. You are limited to their, you can't use their brand. It's like car dealership. See, you know, if someone builds a new car dealership, that isn't the design they want. It's designed Toyota wants. So we are going to the ARC as I think you, somebody, everyone mentioned, we'll go back to the ARC and the applicant will certainly try to, will determine what flexibility they have with the with brand in terms of modifications of the design. As somebody maybe Luis mentioned, you know, McDonald's apparently showed some flexibility. So hopefully avid brand will show some flexibility. So we'll, you know, as soon as we can get back to the the ARC, we'll we'll address those issues there. But I I can't say we'll make it look like the Casa Munro because I doubt avid would agree to that. So and I always say that because my father used to own the Casa and I used to bust dishes there. So anyway, that's, I think that's it. So thank you again for your consideration. Thank you for the effort the city has put in for three years getting us to this point and we respectfully request you approve the project. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, city manager, our average occupancy rate in Monterey is about seventy percent over the course of a year right now in our current environment, so seventy percent. And I want to just share with you, the branding is a very important element for many developments that we have and it also is very difficult sometimes to attract economic partners if we do not acknowledge also their brand and their branding. And I think Richard Ricciello pointed pointed out some good arguments there.
If I may just ask if our, I see our outside council, Adam Lindgren, turned his camera on some, he might have some additional comments that he'd like to share. I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just so I believe just keeping track of the council's discussion, it sounds like there would be a potential to for a motion if it's made to include two modifications, one would be to, and I think they would both be to the resolution approving the use permit. One would be the language that the city attorney previously read into the record and the second would be the addition of a condition to the use permit that would require a high occupancy employee shuttle that would be designed subject to approval by the staff. Have I captured that correctly? City Attorney?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you very much. So if there's no other discussion, maybe we're just ready for motion or go ahead.
I just want to make a couple of.
Okay.
I just want to first thank thank those that are residents that took the time to come here today. And also those that are residents that, you know, called in. So it's a significant impact for District Four. uh, District Four in your neighborhood, so not not unaware of that. Um, as this project has proceeded over the course of the last four or five years, uh, I just wanna make this context to um, you know, how difficult change sometimes can be, and how we try and interpret what the design will be and maybe potentially create some conflicts uh in the neighborhood. I wanna address the parking piece first. Uh, the way I analysis analyze this and my perspective is, I've been in a lot of hotels. And no, I don't stay in Holiday Inn all the time, because that's supposed to make you smarter, right? But I would say that staying in small hotels like the Avid, uh, the impression I get is when I check in, I might be one of the last people and it's full at eight o'clock at night. And I tend to leave very early in the morning for what I have to do, and it's almost always lots of parking spaces in the parking lot, which tells me that the prime time for parking is really late in the evening, and then when we're all sleeping, when everybody's in their hotel rooms, the parking lot might be full. The the type of hotel that this is with no accommodation for conferences, no restaurant, no other activities other than sleeping rooms, means that there's very few employees in the middle of the night. There might be an onsite front desk, maybe a second person, maybe an early morning person that arrives for engineering, and maids typically are coming in about eight thirty-nine, nine thirty-ten, because they obviously can't start cleaning the rooms until people have checked out. So I don't see this as being a problem, because we have a forty-two-room hotel and only forty-two parking spaces. I I see this as a very flexible opportunity to say that I don't think that there's gonna be uh parking conflicts. Uh, and I like the fact that we would consider that they would have a a statement of fact in their use permit, that they are cognizant of the high-impact weekends, and they know that they can't take ten parking spaces of their own for employees and not leave all the parking spaces they know. I mean, it's common sense. You're you're just not gonna operate a business that way. But I would say it's fair to have a statement of that in a motion. Um, the other thing is, I think that we've had a lot of calls make the comments that they are encouraged that someone is picking us, and that they are willing to put a development in North Fremont with the possibility that we can finally see North Fremont have an infusion of economic vitality and execution on what was so um, so difficult to push through with the hard work that the previous planning commissions did years ago with the specific plan. Um, we've had lots of opportunities that have not come together on North Fremont. This one is very important. And it does require some compromises from many of the parties. Compromises from the developer, compromises from the neighbor, compromises and understanding from those that live close by. So nothing is ever perfect. But I think this is the right balance of adjustments and compromises that serve the greater good of the community and especially that neighborhood. So I I I don't see anything to object to. I am interested to see how the process will go through with the A R C. I'm sensitive to the branding piece. There are a few little things that can be done to soften for the eye, but can still look like the brand that it needs to. But I I'm generally in favor of this, because I think it's time that we kickstart North Fremont, and we have an empty property that's not generating any jobs, not generating any T O T, and has been sitting derelict for many, many years. And I just think it's time to move it on. And if there's no other questions or statements, I'm ready to make a motion.
I have another comment, but I can wait till after the motion or.
Um.
Maybe. So um, uh, first of all, I agree with your comments and with Councilmember Garcia's that um North Fremont is in dire need of redevelopment and has for a long time. And nine years ago, when we approved the North Fremont Plan, we hoped it would happen sooner. It hasn't really happened, and we've had a couple of misses. As you drive down that street, you see, you know, the current site is blighted. Let's let's just be honest. It looks horrible. That's bad for the neighbors. That's bad for other businesses. I mean, if I must, if I come here and I'm a visitor and I see that, I'm thinking, is this safe? Of course it is. Let's be very clear. It is safe, but that's the appearance it gives off. So it's gonna benefit, in my opinion, an improved building there and a new building will benefit other businesses, including the neighbor, the neighboring one that's objecting. I think it will benefit them. And I think it'll benefit the neighborhood overall. Um, especially if it does lead to other investment and improvement. You know, we've got a number of empty sites and a number of other blighted sites. So um, I I think this is a good opportunity to maybe hopefully finally jumpstart redevelopment of North Fremont. Um, as far as the 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 language of, as it relates to parking, I'll be honest, and I teach English, I don't see how forty-two is more is fifty or more. I I don't see why in any way you would require extra spots. It's not fifty, it's forty-two. If there were fifty, if there were fifty rooms, then you would need it, but it but there aren't. There are forty-two rooms. I guess I just don't understand how um the, those who object are are reading that, just the plain language. Um, personally, I don't even think we need to amend the language, but if staff is saying it's advisable to do so, then that's fine. But to me, it seems crystal clear. Um, so I do think uh I would like to see us include a, you know, direction or requirement that on high-volume days, you know, there'd be some requirement for an employee shuttle. I think that um makes sense. But I do agree with Councilmember Ed and with staff, most of the time, I don't think they're gonna be at capacity, and so most days, it shouldn't be an issue. But for those days, it could be an issue. And I've been, I've been there for, you know, big events at the fairgrounds, and I have seen the parking push off into the neighborhood, and I know that it affects folks on those days. So I do think requiring a shuttle for those kinds of occasions makes sense, and it sounds like they're open to it. Last thing is the design. I personally am ambivalent one way or another. I mean, the design looks corporate. It it's fine. It's not exciting. Um, but I don't think we necessarily need to include any language, I think, in the in the motion. I would like the A R C to know. My personal feeling is that if they can find a way to make it more attractive, that um is, that is not a violation of the corporate branding, and you know, that would be great. I do think it could be improved. So, but I don't know that we necessarily need that in the motion, although if it is, that's fine with me. So anyway, Ed, you were ready to make a motion. You wanna go ahead and?
Um, yeah, you you sparked something that I wanted.
Go ahead.
Point out. Um, I know that uh, from from looking at the other hotels and uh frequenting the area, I don't know that there's really ever been any time where the De Anza parking was a problem, and I think they're basically about the same size with the amount of same parking, the amount of same rooms. But I don't think their parking is is causing any push off to the curb side. Um, so there is some curb parking. Um, and you know, as this moves forward in its final design, and we, the city discovers there's some mitigation that needs to happen. I mean, we're pretty flexible about a city saying that, you know, we might have to put a red curb here, we might have to put a striping there, the, maybe someday that the bus is in conflict and we ask M S T where they need to move it a half a block. So th- these things are all part of the process as we we flex to make things work in an urban environment. So I'm not too concerned about um being super congested. I did have one um question about the sound wall, and I couldn't find it in here. Is the sound wall erected for the construction, or is that a permanent effect that stays? And maybe Levi could just say yes or no. Is that sound wall staying beyond the construction?
Yeah, it's uh required to be built prior to construction, and it's to remain after construction.
Okay, good. Thank you. And that gives me great comfort. And I'm ready for a motion if that start anything else.
Okay, go ahead. Someone would like to make a motion.
If I can do this motion, um, I I make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation with the four points. And um, I'll read them, because I think it's important that the city council adopt a resolution to certify the environmental impact report that the city council introduced by title only wave full reading and pass a first reading of an ordinance to amend Monterey City Code, M C C Chapter Thirty-eight, modifying the vis- the visitor accommodation facility parking standards and off-street parking and loading standards. And three, that the city council adopt a resolution to amend the North Fremont specific plan to provide clarifying applicability language. Four, that the city council adopt a resolution to approve the use permit for the hotel use and reduced loading space requirements. And I would add that the uh applicant uh be required to submit a policy for peak hour parking conflicts, not using the term shuttle, because there's other alternative ways to transport, so that that's included in the use permit. And the language the city attorney read to the clerk, if you wanna read read that again, that to be included in the motion.
There was any and all appeals to the planning commission there too. Is that correct? Deny any and all um appeals to the planning commission there too, I think is okay.
Okay. And if I've included everything in the motion, that's my motion.
All right, so the motion was made by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Barber. Any other discussion by council? All right, seeing none, um, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffa?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you to the public. We really do appreciate your participation, and uh we would encourage you to continue to participate in the process as this goes to the A R C. Thank you very much. So, let's see, um, Mr. City Manager, yeah.
It's two.
Um, so which item did you uh want us to address next? I'm trying to. Looks like we have about an hour.
Uh, is it item two?
Consent.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, folks, if you um appreciate you, but if you could take your conversations outside and make it easier for us to uh resume our business. Thank you so much.
So um, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and uh council members, uh, did we email Councilmember Garcia a copy of that? Okay. Um, in front of you is now the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
We have two items on the consent agenda, award of construction contract to Global Diversified Voltage, as well as um, the first reading by title only to update cannabis ordinance, and item number four to appoint Andrew Miller as interim fire chief. What I just handed out to you is is uh, uh, an updated salary schedule uh, that um, e- established the salary that we mentioned, or the hourly rate that we mentioned in the agenda report for uh, the appointment of Andrew Miller as interim fire chief effective December thirty-first.
And and for that item, sorry to interrupt, but um, so it'd be best if we could poll number four just briefly, and and um, maybe you wanna do that after the consent of items number two and three.
Okay, so are there any other items on the consent council wants to uphold besides item four or any members of the public? Um, it sounds like we will be pulling item four. Yeah. Number three?
Just so we have a separate vote.
Okay, understood. Yeah, um, is there anyone in the chamber, members of the public, that wanna pull an item other than three or four, or anyone online?
There are no hands currently raised, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so why don't we address number four first?
Right, and then this is just a preliminary matter, and it's just a bit unusual, because we don't typically do this. So in order to add this action item on, which is to update the salary schedule to add the extra help retired annuitant position, we do need to have a unanimous vote of the city council to sort of walk this on the agenda. And that can be done based upon findings that, at the time the agenda was posted, um, new facts and circumstances came to light that we weren't aware of until just now, um, necessitating this action, and that there'd be detriment uh if we don't do it. So it turns out, um, the salary schedule, the top step for the extra help retired annuitant position, that's a mouthful, does not have the hourly rate for the fire chief. So you're not setting an hourly rate, you're not it's just not on the schedule. And um, this action is required um expeditiously, because that position will start on Monday. Um, and then the appointment as an interim fire chief would start um on the thirty-first. So if there's a vote of the council to walk on this draft resolution, then um, then you can go ahead and take up the underlying substantive uh issues.
Okay, so let's uh, let's address number four first then, and um, are there any questions from council regarding item four, or what the city attorney just um shared with us? Okay, seeing none, let's take it out to the public. Anyone in the chamber want to address item four, which is appointing Andrew Miller as interim fire chief and approving an employment contract? Seeing none, anyone online?
No hands raised, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, then um, with the findings as um, as um outlined by the city attorney, understood, is there a motion regarding number four? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion uh for agenda item four, recommendation from the city or city council, direction to staff. We adopt the attached resolution to appoint Andrew Miller as the interim fire chief effective December thirty-first, and authorize the city manager to assign the attached employment agreement, and also uh see resolution uh before us, twenty-three dash one forty-eight, making the adjustment salary to publish into the employee uh salary schedule.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table um by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Barber. Any other discussion? Um, do we need a roll call vote? Yes, please, let's move forward with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Hoffa?
Yes, um, motion passes for all. Um, so we also, let's see, pulled item three. Um, do you have a need for any kind of staff presentation or any? Okay, so then I would entertain um a motion. Um, okay, moved to approve by uh Councilmember Barber.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Any other discussion? Uh, public, public comment on item number three in the chamber? And just to clarify, this is a first reading by title only to update the cannabis business ordinance, and it relates to um some of the areas that would be available to um locate cannabis businesses, essentially being somewhat modified and uh made smaller due to um an updated, updated information and map of uh where it would be appropriate based on state law.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
It just in addition, it it also includes the piece of redefinition of what um youth, youth.
Youth.
Youth participating centers mean.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so anyone in the chamber? Wanna speak? I see seeing none. Anyone online?
There are no hands raised, Mr. Vice.
Okay, then we have a motion on the table. If there's no other questions or comments, and seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Member Smith?
No.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffa?
Yes. So motion passes three to one. We have um, the remaining consent agenda, um, would entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, motion by uh Councilmember Barber, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the remaining portion of the consent agenda. Is there any um, public comment in the chamber? Seeing none, any public comment on those other items online?
No hands raised.
Okay, then if there's no other comments or questions, let's go to a vote.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Hoffa?
Yes. Uh, motion passes for all. And um, this completes uh our meeting agenda. So we're going to adjourn now. So we're going to adjourn now. Thank you all very much for your participation and thank you to staff and thank you to council.
And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Christmas.